This conference will now be recorded.
Lee Reader.
Present.
Abdis. Abdis absent. Baines.
Yeah.
Baines, President. Barandis.
Barandis here.
Thank you, President. Burns.
Here.
Burns, President. Jones.
Here.
Thank you. Tom?
Okay, call for approval of the agenda. Kevin?
Yeah, I do have one addendum or revised staff report is for item 7.1.1 Committee Meeting Minutes. Did receive the Personnel Committee Meeting Minutes and distributed them to the Board and able included in our record for today's meeting. Just wanted to make sure when the board packet was produced, obviously, the Personnel Committee meeting hadn't occurred yet. Did occur this week and want to add those into our record. And I do want to note that trustee Abdis has arrived and is present for the meeting. Other than that, no changes to the agenda.
Okay. Move on. Tom Barandis, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
One second, we just have to have approval, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
With approval of the agenda.
I second.
Motion by trustee Jones, second by Lee Reader. Julie, will you take your role?
Yes, trustee Gilbert.
Yes.
Gilbert, I. Lee Reader?
I.
Lee Reader, I. Abdis?
I.
Abdis, I. Baines?
I.
Baines, I. Barandis?
I.
Barandis, I. Burns?
I.
Burns, I. Jones?
I.
Jones, I. Approved.
Okay, moving on. Tom? The use of the pledge.
Okay, I pledge allegiance. By the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, life, liberty, freedom, happiness.
Two. Thank you, Tom. Okay, conflicts of interest.
Yeah, do any trustees have a conflict on any items on the agenda?
Yeah, I have a conflict on the Greenbrier item, which is item 6.2, so I will be recusing myself from that item.
Okay, thank you, Nick. During that item, if you go ahead and turn your camera off as if you left the room, as to not give any visual or the audio clues to your feeling on that item.
Got it.
So on to item number two here, presentations. On February 23rd, we had our first community meeting with the group of Garden Highway folks that we had sent letters to regarding vegetation abatement modification. I just wanted quickly, if you haven't seen the presentation or watched the meeting recording, just wanted to go through what we shared with them and a little bit of feedback on on what occurred during the meeting and afterwards and kind of what we've been doing in the meantime. So as I pull the presentation up here. There we go. So we work with Allen Strategic, obviously, we've come up with this branding of seeing levees save lives and started. And we feel we can use this not only for the SWIFT enforcement and correction, but also for other things that we want to do as far as concealment of the levee by displaced individuals and things like that. So I think it'll be helpful for the district to have this and have this campaign probably for a few years now as we work through various components of being able to have visibility on the levees. So the next slide here, we'll walk through. So myself and Rick Reinhardt with MBK Engineers, who's the certifying engineer for the levy recertification process for FEMA, joined the meeting as well, and we kind of tag teamed it. If you recall, Rick came to our board last fall and gave a presentation about the SWIFT implementation and what was required. And I'm just going to ask that everybody can mute while we go through this, a little bit of feedback. Our agenda was to talk about the unique aspects of Garden Highway, really kind of convey that we're all part of a whole flood management system, not just from Natomas, but for the Sacramento region, the state, and the nation, based on the critical location of Natomas and the major transportation corridors and economic function of Natomas and how it has wide-ranging impacts. So we're all part of this, living in Natomas, went through what our role was in this process for the SWIFT implementation, a timeline for the residents, and then asked for community input and discussion. So background side here on the unique aspects, obviously, beautiful property on the river. There's lots of recreation, wildlife and habitat there, and it's a spectacular place to live, although it does come with some drawbacks in that being on the river's edge, on top of a levee, and the inherent risks of being in a floodway. So part of the whole Sacramento area and part of this whole flood protection system, our district here is outlined, you guys are all very familiar with this. The Sacramento River, major tributary to the system. We're actually at the confluence of three major tributaries and kind of at the tip of the spear when it comes to flood protection as they all converge, right? Probably our most vulnerable point of our levee system as identified by the state and feds and lots of studies ongoing. So this area along Garden Highway, we really consider this to be the first line of defense for flood protection and probably it's been the most studied out of all of the exterior levee system for the district. And the residents along Garden Highway, there's a little over 600 properties there that are along Garden Highway on the levee. And we sent out 100 letters for vegetation modification and abatement based on a number of surveys and studies and requirements by both state, fed, and our own independent survey. So the stakes are high. There's 100,000 and growing residents in Natomas, the second most likely place for flooding in the nation next to New Orleans. And you guys are all very familiar with the high risks and stakes and why we're here. I did point out to the residents and talk to the community about RD1000's role and all the agencies that we're responsible to and their interaction. And then we're kind of the intermediary between, you know, a local agency, obviously, between the property owners and all of these regulatory agencies and other partners that all have a role. And we're trying to balance the needs of property owners, our needs and requirements by the various regulatory agencies. Title 23 really is kind of the backbone and standards of any encroachments that are allowed or permitted. There is specific section in Section 131 of Title 23 that talks about vegetation and what's allowed and what's not allowed. So the first step in this SWIFT framework and this development was RD1000 creating this outline for the operation and maintenance manual, then submitting that to the Corps and the Central Valley Flood Protection Board, going through and working on a vegetative variance for that. And then lastly is the high-hazard identification of encroachments that'll be necessary for FEMA recertification as well as our operation and maintenance manual for the Corps and the state. So it's evolved, I think Paul sent me an email starting around 2010 from the periodic inspection by the Corps where our levees were decertified after that periodic inspection. And so there's been lots of coordination between the district, the Corps, the Central Valley Flood Protection Board, and then this added component of FEMA certification to keep us eligible in PL 8499, which is the federal disaster relief funding should we need it. And we have used those funds as recently as 2012 when we had to do major repairs to pumping plant two. So why is this happening now? What's changed? Well, the regulations have changed and there's been an allowance of vegetation. So originally, when the levees were constructed and encroachments were allowed, the thought was kind of minimal vegetation through the entire zone and prism of the levee down to the levee toe. And so unobstructed, unlimited field of vision very early on. Then it kind of, this relaxation in the entire flood protection industry kind of happened and maybe some oversight here. But it got to a point, particularly after the paternal decision, after the floods in the early 80s, as well as the events in New Orleans after Katrina, the US Army Corps really got re-energized and started focusing again on levee safety and levee standards and it changed a number of things. And so the system kind of got like this, really limited to no field of view in certain parts of the levee. And so that's when things came out as these changes, right? And so now the O&amp;M manual is being updated, Title 23 is still in force and effective, and we're getting pressure from those regulators to maintain and operate our system per their standards. So we've been able to work with them through this SWIFT process to come up with a vegetative variance that they will allow. And it calls for, and allows for vegetation in certain zones of the levee, but still for RD1000, the ability, and we're acceptable of it to be able to see through those different zones to ensure the integrity of the levees, particularly during high-hazard events or high-water events in the Sacramento River when we're on patrol 24/7. So critically important that we be able to quickly assess the levee as we travel the exterior 42 miles to determine the integrity of the levee system during those high-water events. So this is, in the top right-hand side here, this is kind of what most, not most, a depiction of maybe the 100 properties that there's really limited visual view. If you back up from the truck there, obviously, it's blocked in front of the house, can't see any part of the levee system here. This is where we want to get to and what's allowable in these different zones. So ornamental fencing as long as we can see through it, low ground cover in those first one to two zones. And then when you get down to Zone 4, which is at the toe of the levee, there's pretty much no vegetative restriction and lots of tolerance for vegetation on that backside. In the third zone, a little bit more allowance there. So this is actually very detailed engineered drawing, which is in the SWIFT documents and will be approved for the Garden Highway folks based on the strengthening of the levee system. They've allowed for this relaxation of their vegetative standards for Title 23 for Garden Highway in recognition of the levee improvements that have happened and that are happening currently. So these zones, 10 feet from the center line, obviously, that's in the road width. The first three feet is from the fog line over, minimal obstructions there for inspectors, for our ability to pull off and have the ability to walk along the road without subjecting our employees to traffic or roadside dangers. And so those first three feet are clear. But going after that, the next seven feet in Zone 2, tall trees are allowed as long as they're trimmed up and very low-line vegetation is allowed in those zones. Zone 3, there's some low-line ground cover and shrubs and trees are allowed, again, as long as they're trimmed up and we can kind of see that levee embankment. And in Zone 4, there's very few restrictions down in that zone. And so this is what's in the SWIFT. We talked about those things. And it just is, I know it's hard to zoom in and see those details, but we do have this up on our website now. Here's some real-life examples of very acceptable, no modification of the vegetation needed. Their ornamental fence here doesn't have any blockage behind it. There's no growth. We can see right through it. The intent of the issued permit, and this property owner is doing very well on keeping things trimmed up, low-line ground cover, and we can see all the way down to the riverbank. The second picture here is, again, another acceptable at this point, but could lead into a problem down the road if the vegetation isn't maintained to this level, right? So if it starts to get overgrown and expand a little bit, that's where then we'd have to provide a notification and for them to correct prior to flood season. So normally, ongoing, we'll do our, well, the state does their fall and spring inspection. We'll get the results of that and then develop a work plan for that summer so we're ready for the next fall. And so this potentially could be a problem down the road if the landscape isn't maintained. But as of right now, it looks great and we're totally good with this as well as the state when they did their inspection. This is one that needs correction or modification. So the permitted encroachment is the wrought iron fence here along Garden Highway. However, the shrub, and so the intent of that wrought iron fence is to be able to see through, hence the reason they don't allow solid fencing. And so with the shrubs, it looks beautiful. It's very well maintained aesthetically-wise. However, for our function and our requirements for operation and maintenance, we can't see through there. And so we're asking them to trim back that hedge row behind so that we have some visual breaks in between that hedge. We're not saying complete removal, but just some reasonably spaced break so we can see through. And in the second picture here, it's just a solid wall of vegetation right on the fog line. No place for our flood operations specialists to get out and walk along that property line without putting themselves at risk. Obviously, can't see through that thick vegetation to monitor the levee system at all. So these are two examples of the letters that went out and the property owners that we need to work with here moving forward this year. Our timeline, we are going to have another check-in in April. I'm working with Allen Strategic right now, and we should have postcards sent out in the next week or two to notify the property owners of another meeting. We want to check in with them again, see if we can answer any questions, and then talk about our contractor and onboarding there. And we'll likely start with removal, and not removal, modification of the vegetation. There will be some removal, obviously, we're taking some of that vegetation away. But the modification is, we're not going back to the original levee standards of being a complete vegetative-free zone. So that's our schedule. We do have the funding for this year through the FMAP grant. We have about $450,000. We do plan on issuing our request for proposals on March 15th with hopeful award to a contractor at our May board meeting so that we can get a schedule and communicate the schedule with the property owners as soon as possible. We do have to expend all the funds and be invoiced for everything by December 1st, or we will forfeit the funds, unused funds, back to the state by the end of the year when they do project closeout. So the opportunities now, we have the funding for the landowners to take advantage of this. The only downfall is that at some point, the district's going to likely need to turn properties over that just are unwilling to come into compliance here with the vegetative variance. We'll have to turn them over at some point, and that'll be a decision of the Board for enforcement by the Central Valley Flood Protection Board. It's our responsibility to do that when we've noticed violations to Title 23. And we're trying to help them out first. If we can't get anywhere, then the state expects us to notify them of these things. And that's part of our charge as being a local maintaining agency. So open it up for community discussions and input. We compiled all of the questions. I'm finalizing the, let me pull up my other thing, finalizing the frequently asked questions that we should be able to have posted to the website as early as this afternoon. So that'll be loaded up and then the community can go there for other questions. And again, we're going to have another meeting in mid-April, or excuse me, late April. I think it's April 27th, but don't quote me on that. I'll have to go back and look at my calendar. But I think that last week of April is when we're doing it. But the postcards will go out here in the next week or two. So I just wanted to show you all that, give you kind of the background and what the community saw. So I appreciate you letting me present that to you this morning. Item 3, public comment. If there's anyone from the public that would like to make a comment on non-agendized items, you may do so now.
Hey, Kevin, before we go to item 3, can you tell me on the previous item that the nature of the comments that were received by the public? You know, I listened in, but I know not all board members were in attendance. I'd like to get a summary for everybody's benefit, please.
Yeah, so the nature of the comments were along the lines of, why now? What's changed? These, my landscaping's been here for 30-plus years and it's never been a problem before. And that's, the answer is because the regulations and standards have changed and the attention to our need for visibility has changed since the paternal decision in the early 80s and then post-Katrina and post-2010 periodic inspection. So that answer is part of the frequently asked questions. It'll be loaded up. I will send out the FAQ once it's final approved this afternoon. I'll send it out to all the trustees so you can see that. I'll just send it to you PDF-wise. But along those lines, Nick, why is drive-by inspection the best way and the only method as a district looked into using satellite imagery and drones or things like that? And the answer there is, yes, it is the most effective and efficient way, particularly during enactment of our emergency action plan. We can't rely on dated digital imagery that doesn't show real time. And so for our EAP, we're required to be on continuous patrol during certain river elevation stages that enact our EAP. So kind of along those lines, Nick, and I'll be happy to send those FAQs out to everyone this afternoon once, like I said, once they're finally approved.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. And then in terms, I mean, I know there were a lot of questions by property owners. And you know, I was certainly sensitive to that. I mean, I live adjacent to the east main drain levee, so very familiar with the issues. Garden Highway is much nicer, certainly. But so I am sensitive to those. What resources are we putting out there for people to answer the questions? Because I'm sure people left those meetings with additional questions.
So we do have our SWIFT email address, swift@rd1000.org. Gabe and I monitor that on a daily basis. Gabe is set up and actually had some very positive interactions with property owners, posts the community meeting, got, hey, sure, come in, get it done. Appreciate you guys having the funding. Just let me know a week ahead of time before you're here. And so that's the resource. Gabe, pretty much, this is very important to the district and full focus. So aside from Gabe being tied up in a US Army Corps construction meeting or something like that or design meeting, he makes time every day to go out and meet with these people personally.
Is the Central Valley Board providing additional resources? Because at the end of the day, this isn't us, right? I mean, this is.
Yeah, so.
What resources are they providing to property owners?
Yeah, Ann Halise is the enforcement chief. She actually attended and helped provide some clarity during the public meeting on the 23rd. And she has, since this meeting, there's been a couple, there was one particular property owner during the meeting that had just newly acquired within the last year or two, didn't even know that they needed a permit and that they needed to change the ownership name on their permit with the Central Valley Protection Board. She reached out to us the following day. We got her in touch with Ann Halise and the process already started. So Ann Halise and her crew are willing to pull up permits and provide information if we don't have it. And so that's been really helpful as well.
All right, thanks, Kevin. Obviously, this process is ongoing and there continue to be, obviously, community sensitivities here. So I certainly think that we need to be as transparent, open, and accessible as possible to answer folks' questions. Because I get it, this is a very sensitive topic and people need to feel comfortable with the answer.
Yeah.
Kevin?
Oh, go ahead.
Kevin, thanks, Nick, for what you just said, because that dovetails nicely into what I want to suggest. I know it's hard to believe that in this day and age, there may be people who do not have access to the internet and our website. For those that do, Kevin, can we make that a downloadable PDF that maybe they could share with their neighbors? I'd also like to suggest that we mail a hard copy to everyone affected. We probably have that information. And also, given the demographics of our community, I think it would be a good idea to translate the FAQs into Spanish or other applicable languages, given our demographics. Perhaps we could work with Allen Strategic to get that done. But not everyone speaks English and not everyone has the internet. So if we could do that, that would be great and make us even more transparent and responsive to our community.
Yeah, and we have sent out, the letter went out hard copy to the individual property owners back in January. The postcard will go out as hard copy as well. The FAQs, we certainly have the ability with Allen Strategic for translation services in their contract. So I will ask them to do that today. It may not be complete by this afternoon for the translation, but hopefully next week, because we are trying to finish it up and get those posted this afternoon, at least the English version. And then I will ask them to have a downloadable PDF as opposed to just having it embedded on the website.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah. Any other questions before we move on to public comment?
I did, Deborah and Nick kind of hit on the issue. I just was thinking with only 100 properties, we know which properties, that was the biggest question in the meeting, was how do they find out? I know they probably got it in their original packet, but I'm just curious if we could, if we're keeping track of who has reached out to us to get services and then those who haven't, that we put a sticker, you put something on there saying, hey, we haven't heard from you. You've got a property that's been identified as something that needs fixed. You know, the more, as Nick was, and Deborah, more transparency and communication. That way, it bolsters our case down the road if we ever have to do any kind of enforcement. Hopefully, we don't.
Right.
We've reached out, we've told them multiple times. It's 100 postcards at most, it sounds like. And I'm assuming Gabe or somebody's keeping track of who's, which property has scheduled a meeting and a simple, like I said, mailing label that could just say, hey, call us, we haven't heard from you. Because that'll help us down the road.
Yeah, we do keep a list. We have all the APNs listed out. And Gabe has his Excel spreadsheet on who he's contacted, the nature of the visit, and any further follow-up. I will, after the April meeting that we have, make sure that if there are properties that we haven't heard from or haven't attended either one of the meetings, that we try to reach out personally and track them down to make them aware and educate them about what's going on if they just haven't received it. So noted, Chris, and we're making our best effort to get in touch with all these folks. So.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
So I want to touch on something that Chris said, because I think it bears support. So thanks for that, Chris. I want to be clear that it's understood that we are not an enforcement agency, that the agency enforcing these restrictions is going to be the Central Valley Flood Protection Board. And that that needs to be abundantly clear, that that is the agency that will be bringing enforcement actions, not RD1000.
That's correct. Yeah. All right, we do have a lengthy agenda today, so I want to kind of move on. Okay, so onto public comments here for non-agendized items. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on non-agendized items may do so now.
Yeah, Kevin, Patrick Tully, is a, is a presentation an agenda item that we can speak on publicly?
Yeah. So if you'd like to make a comment on the presentation, you can go ahead and do that now.
Okay. Thank you, board members. I am Patrick Tully. I'm one of the 100 landowners on the Garden Highway that received a letter about the removal of the landscape from RD 1000. I do understand the comment was just that you're not an enforcement group and I do understand that, as do most people. But it's based on essentially your easement, that most of this stuff is taking place and would result in falling back to DWR. The meeting was a good meeting. Kevin did a good job. But I'll be honest, the meeting was generally not well received by Garden Highway landowners. There was a difference between what we received in the letter and what was said in the meeting. The letter said that we need to remove everything. The meeting said that it can be modified. So you have a messaging problem that needs to be cleared, cause you have a lot of angry people on Garden Highway right now, just like let the board know that. The other thing that's important is that the SWIFT was mentioned considerable times. The SWIFT was never available for public comment, to my knowledge. In a 2016 board meeting by this very board, one of the board members asked if it went to public comment and the answer was never actually given. Clearly it hadn't been. So the, the basic thing was to come down, and I'll keep my comments short. I have a red tip fatina hedge that protects my house both from security and from noise. It doesn't protect me from any type of privacy, a vision blocking at all. My hedge is easily seen over and it's easily seen around. My lot is approximately a hundred feet wide. My driveway gates are almost 20 feet. 50% of my lot is open for visibility. I received a letter saying that my fatinas are high hazard. I fail to see, using common sense, how many of these infractions are a high hazard. Natomas is not going to flood because of my fatinas. But I will work very hard at getting into every single aspect of RD 1000 SAFCA and DWR over this issue, as will a lot of my neighbors with that on my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tully, for your comments. Any other public comment on non-agendized items? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to item 4.1, General Manager's Report. I do want, in the effort of everyone's time this morning, I want to point out just a couple of things from the General Manager's Report. Last month I asked if any trustees were interested in attending the CSDA Leadership Conference in San Diego or NAPA, the San Diego one is like next week. So doubtful there. But the NAPA conference is in September. Just wanted to check. I did hear back from two trustees that were interested in attending and wanted to make sure before we sent off that registration, if anyone else would like to join us. You don't have to, you know, let me know today, but by the end of next week, so we can get registration done. And if you end up changing your mind closer to September and want to attend, there's always the ability to, to add you in there and get that booked for you. So I wanted to point that out. This year, we're going to start our budget process soon. And so on page one here, look for committee meeting requests to be sent out, starting the week of April 4th, with the Personnel Committee meeting. So if you have some availability, if you're on one of these committees, let me know. I'm also reach out, you know, after this meeting to start setting these up. On committee meeting notifications now, I've, cause there has been some confusion about, you know, calendar invites and who's on what committees. And I've started sending out calendar invites for all the committee members only. And then separate to, with the agenda attached, and then separate to that, I'll follow up with a, an email to all of the trustees with the meeting agenda and notification, so that you don't get an invite if you're not on that committee. You're welcome to attend and just let me know if you're going to be a participant or an observer. But you'll all be informed of all committee meetings that are set. If you are on the committee, you will receive a calendar invite from me. So you can go ahead and accept that. If you aren't on that specific committee, you will not receive a calendar invite, just so it doesn't create confusion and accidentally accept. And then back and forth of wait, I'm not on this committee, am I not? So I think this, and it's worked well this last week. So I think if that works for all of you, let me know how that's going. And then if we need to modify, again, you know, we'll come up with a different way of setting up these committee meeting minutes. And then I think there was one other item I wanted to talk about here on the General Manager's Report, and then I'll turn it over for your questions. Oh, I mentioned it earlier. So on the SWIFT presentation, we do intend to go out to bid on March 15th for contractors with potential award in, in May, the May board meeting for the contractor, so we can get going on the, the grant project. Any questions on the GM's report?
Yeah, Kevin, I have a question. So on the hydraulic model, I don't, you know, what's going on with that?
Yeah. So our contractor, I reached out again. They are working in the background. I just, I know they're working. I've seen some products produced. I'm still waiting for a schedule from them to, to close this out. So we do have monthly meetings with the Interior Levy Certification Group of the City of Sacramento and the County. They're kind of at a, at a holding pattern now until the model's finished. There is a, another question in the model that Scott and Rebecca and Rick Reinhardt and Paul need to, to schedule a meeting. And hopefully Scott, look at your calendar, see if there's something available the first week of April to go over the PGC culverts and their incorporation into the operations and maintenance manual, because it does impact the hydraulic model pretty significantly. So we need to kind of put closure to that. But I will, I will call our, Mr. Plumber again this afternoon and see if I can get this scheduled. I've been asking for it for two months now. So I do know that he had some, some family emergencies and some things going on last month. I did follow up with him after our last board meeting. Oh yeah, I'll get it to you by the end of this week, no problem. And, and have not received it. So.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you following up, Kevin. I get it's a little frustrating, but you know, we need a schedule. We're paying a lot of money for that hydraulic model and it's an important tool.
Yep.
So thanks for keeping it.
There's another, I know that they're working closely with Mead and Hunt. And so I'll put a little pressure on Steve Sullivan to get, even if, you know, Tom Plumber and his group can't produce the schedule, I'll make sure that Steve Sullivan puts pressure on him there and produces a schedule for us, so we know when we're going to close out. But yeah, the city is waiting on that being wrapped up.
Thanks.
Yep. Any other questions on the GM report? Okay, hearing none. We'll go on to item 4.2, Operations Manager's Report. Anything or any questions on the information provided in item 4.2? Alright, easy job. 4.3, General Counsel's Report. Scott, Rebecca, anything to report?
Good morning. So we have, we'll be weighing in, I think, on a few items later down on your, on your list, Kevin. One sort of general in the legal world to report is your ongoing AB 361 compliance. We've had a couple of districts that have had questions about this, so I wanted to provide some clarity here. As you know, the governor has rolled back several of his emergency orders or executive orders related to COVID-19. We're still in a statewide state of emergency and so 8361 is still in play and your virtual meetings are still in play. Scott and I will continue to keep you updated should that be rolled back. But it is, is, we're seeing this slow piecemeal pullback. And so I wanted to provide some clarity there. Other than that, you know, a little bit of support on the Lone Tree Canal coming up, a little bit of support on SWIFT. Scott, I don't know if you have anything else you'd like to add?
I'm not sure if you could hear me shaking my head. No, I have nothing.
Alright, thank you Rebecca and Scott. Any questions from the board?
Sorry, Kevin. Yes, I did, since she brought up 361, right now it's, it's an optional, right? So we can, we could go back to actual in-person meetings. It's not a requirement that we continue with virtual.
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct. AB 361 relates to your noticing, not where you have to meet.
Well, okay. So we, we do have the option to go back to person, in-person meetings.
The governor's order had never required virtual meetings. There was a Sacramento County order that had required virtual meetings. And Rebecca, unless you know otherwise, my understanding is, is that has been changed and so in-person meetings are permitted again.
Yeah, that changed out of about a, a week and a half ago.
Okay. So it's, it's a board decision now whether to continue with virtual or in-person?
Yeah. And if the board wants to have a debate on that or a discussion on that, that's certainly something Kevin can agendize or a decision that the president and the general manager can make together.
It is on the agenda today for item 5.1 is the, I'm sorry, 5.5. If you'd like to pull it and have more discussion, pull it off consent, we can do that and determine what the majority of the board prefers here.
I, not at this point. I just want to make sure clear, because the governor, I lost track of all the executive orders. So I just want to make sure it wasn't something we had to do. It's something now that we are choosing to do. But thank you.
So can I suggest in the interest of time, only because we have a pacted agenda that, you know, I'm, I'm okay moving forward with approving the consent item, but that may be a, a further discussion, maybe next month. Cause I, I certainly have some feelings. There's some pros and cons, certainly. We don't have the capabilities to be a hybrid sort of a situation. And I do appreciate, you know, the ability of folks to be able to, the public to be able to call in. I certainly miss seeing everybody, but I think for the public, I think they'd rather just log on and attend a meeting than come in person. But maybe they would like to come in person. If that's the case, I think we just need to have a further discussion about it. And I don't think today should be the day that we do that. So just my thoughts on that.
No, I, I wasn't, thank you. I wouldn't suggest that. Maybe urbanization might want to talk about that as far as whether it's good or bad for public outreach. So, um, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Chris and Nick. Moving on to consent calendar, I would entertain a motion for approval of consent calendar items 5.1 through 5.8, unless there's anything that needs to be pulled.
I will move approval of consent.
A second.
Motion by Abdis, second by Burns. Jolene, will you take role?
Yes, trustee Gilbert.
Yes.
Gilbert, I, Lee Reader.
I.
Lee Reader, I. Abdis?
I.
Abdis, I. Baines?
I.
Baines, I. Brandis?
I.
Brandis, I. Burns?
I.
Burns, I. Jones? Jones?
I'm sorry, I was still muted. I.
Okay, thank you. Consent calendar is approved.
Thank you, Jolene. Onto item 6.1, which is the City of Sacramento's proposed stormwater fee. We did receive, I forget the exact count, but I think we have with the tables here, four or so properties that are subject to their proposed fee. They haven't had an update in their, their stormwater services for about the same length of time that RD 1000 hasn't. We would pay about a hundred dollars per month if approved. So I have received the ballots. The request from staff is to support, obviously as part of an integral part of our own flood protection system and the city services provided there. Staff is in favor and recommends that the board approve this measure and authorize the general manager on behalf of the district to submit ballots. I think there's four separate ballots that cover all these properties in favor of the measure. So I'll turn it over to the board for board comment.
I think this is pretty straightforward. It's something we need to do. So, I mean, I, I'm happy to move approval of the item.
A second.
Motion by, of this, second by Lee Reader. Any public comment on item 6.1? Hearing none. Jolene, will you take role?
Yes, trustee Gilbert.
Hi.
Gilbert, I. Lee Reader.
I.
Lee Reader, I. Abdis?
I.
Abdis, I. Baines?
I.
Baines, I. Burns?
No.
Burns, no. Brandis?
Brandis, I.
Brandis, I. Jones?
I.
Jones, I. Questions approved.
Thank you, Jolene. Nick, at this time, I'd ask you to turn off your cameras. We move to item 6.2.
Yes, can you please text me when this item's over? I'm going to walk away from my computer.
I will. Yep, thank you. Okay, item 6.2 is Greenbrier Development. For about a year and a half now, we've been working with the Greenbrier Development Group on, and presented to the board over a year ago about their request for RD 1000 to take ownership of the Lone Tree Canal post recognition of their environmental easements. We do operate and maintain that section of Lone Tree Canal. I don't, have to review with Scott and Rebecca. There aren't many inherent risks with taking over property ownership. But Scott and Rebecca, if you want to add anything there, we've been able to come up with this form of agreement for real estate transfer. And so this, this item is recommending authorization of the general manager to acquire the property for Lone Tree Canal. And, and approved resolution, sorry, the number's covered up here, 2022-03-04.
Uh, yeah. So briefly, one of the reasons, I mean, obviously this is a real estate transaction, so it needs to come to the board. But anytime a, a public agency like this accepts even a gift of, of property, which is what this would be, you go through a formal acceptance process and the, we then record the acceptance with the, the transfer document. In this case, you know, you're already performing your regular flood control activities on the parcel. You're not acquiring, this is a cost, is it any cost? The, there is an existing conservation easement on the property that will be its management and operations will be funded by an endowment that is funded and managed already by Greenbrier. And, you know, the thought from, from Greenbrier here was that, gosh, it's going to be easier for you to just own the property than for you to have to deal with a new property owner. But you wouldn't be taking on new responsibilities. And that was, you know, part of our view and very important to us, is that we don't need to see you taking on an additional piece of management or expense. We want to see you, you know, we're happy, happy to make this easier, but we don't want to, we don't want to see the district incur additional risk. Kevin or Scott, I don't know if you have other, other items you want to?
That's perfect, Rebecca. Thank you. Any questions from trustees on this item? Hearing none. Any public comment on item 6.2? Okay, hearing none. I'd entertain a motion for approval of item 6.2, Resolution 2022-03-04.
I move approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Baines, second by Burns. He beat you, Tom. So Jolene, will you take role, please?
Yes, trustee Gilbert.
I.
Gilbert, I. Lee Reader.
I.
Lee Reader, I. Abdis? Absent. Baines?
I.
Baines, I. Brandis?
Brandis, I.
Brandis, I. Burns?
I.
Burns, I. Jones?
I.
Jones, I.
So just for the rest of the, trustee Abdis isn't absent. He was refused from this item. So we'll just make that reflective in the resolution.
Yes, thank you.
Yep. Thanks, Jolene. I'm going to text Nick here, let him know he can come back on. Okay, so, I'll be right here in a minute. So on to item 6.3, Consolidated Capital Assessment District Number Two, funding agreement with SAFKA that replaced the Consolidated Capital Assessment District. The original one, SAFKA went out with their new assessment. I think it started in 2017, I believe. So the thought was to consolidate the existing one, the future one, recognizing the financial responsibility for operation and maintenance of the improved levee system. A portion of the SAFKA proceeds in their assessment are for the natomas management area and and RD1000. So we have been working, prior to coming on, Paul had been working with SAFKA and Legal Counsel at the time for both agencies to kind of negotiate this funding agreement and make sure that everything that both sides wanted in the agreement was there. Scott and Rebecca and I, after asking SAFKA for a bit of time, we got their comments back, they had some staff turnover as well. And so we got this together. I do want to report that we do anticipate SAFKA bringing it to their board meeting next month for approval. So really good sign, this, here's that funding, something that's been on the to-do list since 2017. But I think we're nearing the finish line here and and provides some more clarity to our financial future. So any questions on the Consolidated Capital Assessment District Number Two contracts from trustees?
So Kevin, I I just want to say on this one, this has been out there for quite a long time and we're talking many years. And so I just want to acknowledge the effort that you put in in closing the loop finally on on this and getting this agreement in place that marks a really important, you know, milestone for us and our relationship with SAFKA and the funding that comes from CCAD too. So I don't want to lose sight of the, you know, the amount of work that went into bringing this together, so.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Yep, thank you, and I'm happy to move the item.
And second by Jones, is that correct?
Yes.
Hi, Kevin, I have a question, real quick. On the 1.4 million, that's currently what we're receiving already, that's.
Yes, so we were receiving the 1.4, the agreement hadn't been signed and finalized. But SAFKA has been paying the escalated amount, starting in 2017, well, I think 2017, 2018, 2018, 19, 1920. They've been paying that static 1.4 million. So they've been performing in good faith. What is noted is the escalator in the agreement as referenced. And there's a little bit of nuance as far as submitting that request to SAFKA for the escalator. They do have the ability to request backup documentation if they want. It has a maximum of 1.5% escalator per year. So that is in there and that's part of what we was doing, the plan was to figure that out for our own financial plan, that we can work out into our own.
I'm going to walk with SAFKA, be back in an hour, the dogs are out here on the deck.
I'm sorry, somebody, no, Tom, mute. So I have a motion by trustee Abdis and a second by trustee Jones for approval of item 6.3. Any public comment? Okay, hearing none, Jolene, will you take role?
Yes, trustee Gilbert.
Aye.
Gilbert, aye. Lee Reader?
Aye.
Lee Reader, aye. Abdis?
Aye.
Abdis, aye. Baines?
Aye.
Baines, aye. Verandis?
Verandis, aye.
Verandis, aye. Burns?
Aye.
Burns, aye. Jones?
Aye.
Jones, aye. Motion's approved.
Thank you, Jolene. Item 6.4, the district general election. I do want to make a note of the typographical error that we we made in the executive summary. So it does talk in paragraph two, at the end of sentence, line two, the terms of two parcel seats, that should read three parcel seats and not two. So just a, it's a little error there. But doesn't affect anything as far as the resolution goes. So this is the resolution calling for the election and we'll start our process. And I don't know, Rebecca, if you want to add anything here or if there's any questions from the trustees, I think it's pretty straightforward. But feel free to jump in if anyone has questions, or Rebecca, if you have a comment.
Uh, no, pretty straightforward. I I think we kind of went over the timeline and process last month. I'll just offer it for those of us that are still a little bit haggard from the last experience of counting votes, that these will be much simpler because it's just one vote per parcel. So hopefully, our our vote process, our vote counting process will be a little bit less painful.
But three, three votes per parcel.
Yes, three votes, but no, no strange 1,747 votes for this parcel and 94 for that one, so.
I'll move the item.
Deborah, I know on the election, there was a question last month about the election timeline and setting up an urbanization committee meeting to review the determination between parcel seat and assessment seat. We do not have the assessor's report yet to determine if we need to change, I believe you asked last month, right? To take into urbanization, to make that distinction between whether we make the threshold for a change in our assessment seats and parcel seats. So as soon as we get that information from our our assessor, we'll schedule that urbanization committee meeting to go over that.
Yeah, and that just needs to happen before mid-May, so you've got some time.
Okay. But I do want to make note that I hadn't lost sight of that of doing that and that that's for our process moving forward with the election. So any questions from trustees on this item? Hearing none, any public comment? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for adoption of Resolution 2022-03-05, calling for the district's general election for 2022.
So moved.
Motion by Gilbert?
Okay.
Second by Verandis, I believe?
Yep.
Thank you. Jolene, will you take role?
Yes, trustee Gilbert.
Aye.
Lee Reader?
Aye.
Abdis?
Aye.
Baines?
Aye.
Verandis?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion's approved.
Thank you, Jolene. Onto item 6.5, this one should be pretty quickly, I think I know the outcome of this, but I should ask anyway, is there any trustee that would like to be nominated to serve on the Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee to to participate in their election? If if a trustee is interested, it would take a majority of the board to make that nomination and approve, and then we'll submit the candid statements and stuff prior to their deadline. So anyone interested in being on the Treasury Oversight Committee? Perfect. No action taken on item 6.5 and no interest there. So go for their action by the district. Onto item 7.1.1, which is the committee reports. I did distribute the revised Personnel Committee meeting minutes earlier this week. I think maybe even just yesterday. So you should all have that, we'll enter that into the record and put it in our minutes for today's meeting. And so if there's no comments on the committee meeting, next month's report will be a lot longer for this 7.1.1 as we have a number of committee meetings coming up. Buckle up, it's going to be fun. And we have key scheduled for next week already. And looking forward to meeting you guys at those respective meetings and and working through some some pretty heavy stuff here coming up. So, thank you. Unless there's questions or public comment on committee report, we can move on to item 8.1, which is closed session. And if everyone's ready there, I would ask that all members from the pub, public, briefly, if you go ahead and log off of this meeting, the board will be going into closed session. You can log back on in a minute or two. And then when the meeting's unlocked, you'll you'll be right back in in the meeting to hear the report out from closed session. So all non-trustees, please, please leave the meeting now and and log back in in the next, you know, five to 10 minutes. Trustees, I'm going to stay on until we get into closed session, then I'll lock and remove myself. I'll lock the meeting and turn off the recording and make Scott and or Rebecca, probably Scott or Rebecca, who wants to be the host?
I don't think we care. I I think I did it before, Rebecca, have you done it? You've done it, okay, so just flip a coin, Kevin.
All right. I'm keying out Rebecca here, so I'm making you the organizer.
Excellent.
And then also make you the presenter, so you can share your screen. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and lock, I'm going to stop the recording.